All right. Good morning, everybody. Looks like everybody who's trying to log in has logged in. So today is June 2, 2022. My name is Alan Lilly. I'm the Presiding Hearing Officer of the State Water Resources Control Board's Administrative Hearings Office, and this is a continuation of the hearing on the prosecution team's complaint against Grissette Farms and Stephen Grissette. We had a continuation of the hearing to today to allow for some additional tests tomorrow. So before I proceed, I'll just ask for appearances. First of all, who is appearing on behalf of of the State Water Board Prosecution Team?
Good morning, Mr. Lilly. This is Debbie Oars, and I'm here on behalf of the State Board's Prosecution Team.
Right. Good morning, Ms. Oars, and who's here for Stephen Grissette and Grissette Farms?
Paul Manassian, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Okay, and I'm not sure why, Mr. Manassian, but the caption below in your picture says Jackson Manassian, so we'll change that to say Paul Manassian instead.
Thank you very much.
I think we can. All right. Go ahead, excuse me.
Be able to do it from my end.
Well, okay, well, we can probably, there, it's done. Thank you. All right. Any other appearances for this morning?
Good morning, Mr. Lilly. My name's Samantha Olson. I am appearing here from State Water Board in response to a subpoena that was issued in this case to the State Water Board.
All right. Good morning, Ms. Olson. All right. I don't see any other appearances. Mr. Doakes, there's a large sign in your screen that says, "Our city, our county, our water, no illegal grows," and I'm finding that distracting, so I'm going to ask you to take that down, please. If we were in person, it might be acceptable to have a sign like that at the back of a hearing room, but the way the video comes out, it's just too distracting. So thank you. All right, so let me tell you what I have in the way of papers today, and we can then proceed. I received a subpoena and subpoena deuces Tecum from Mr. Manassian. It looks like it was with a letter dated, I was copied on a letter to Mr. Michael Lauffer, the Chief Counsel of the State Water Board, dated May 23. And it was to, for person most knowledgeable with custody of documents described in affidavit attached and incorporate herein to appear today. And I assume, Ms. Olson, well, let me just tell you the other papers I've received, and we'll go from there. And then yesterday afternoon, I received a memorandum from Ms. Olson dated June 1, which was object, the subject line reads, "Objection and motion to quash subpoena dated May 20, 2022 in the matter of administrative civil liability against Grissette Farms." And then I also received a declaration of Rajah Hassan, which was not dated, but I received it yesterday, so we gave it a file name of June 1 in our files. And then I just made a copy this morning of that, since Ms. Hassan is here in response to a subpoena from the respondent. I have labeled that declaration as Exhibit Respondent 13. So that's what I have received. And here's my plan. I'm going to, since Ms. Hassan is here, I'm going to proceed with her testimony. I'm going to ask her to authenticate her declaration under oath. And then we'll allow Mr. Manassian and Ms. Oars to ask questions of her, and of course, Ms. Olson. Since you're representing Ms. Hassan today, you may object to those, and then I also will ask questions. And then after that, I will take up the remainder of the subpoena and the objections to motion to quash, and we'll see where we are at that. So that's the way I plan to proceed this morning. Does anybody have any questions or comments about that process before we start?
I do, Mr. Lilly. My hope was that you would, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please, Ms. Olson.
Yeah, I was hoping to hear from the Hearing Officer about our objections and the motion, so that we can, I guess my hope was sort of bound this exercise in the testimony and the scope, the questions that are appropriate here. So waiting until after that exercise to hear from you about the motion seems inefficient to me because I will have to raise objections that are already articulated in the written motion, depending on the questions.
Okay, well, it's, there's a sequencing question here, I agree. The reason I want to do it that way is I first want to hear the scope of the questioning and the testimony, and then decide how to rule on the objections. So I appreciate your concern, but I just think I don't have sufficient information right now to make an informed ruling. So I guess I'll say, if you have objections to any of the questions, I think the best thing is for you to just state those, and then we'll proceed that way. There's a sequencing question here, and we'll do the best we can. And so, Ms. Hassan, when you are asked questions, if you can try to remember, always count to three, one, two, three, in your mind, not out loud, before you respond to anything, and that'll give Ms. Olson an opportunity to object if she thinks she needs to. It also gives you a chance to think about your answer to the question. I tell all witnesses to do that, so it usually works as a good procedure. So I'm going to proceed that way, and then we'll see where we are. I definitely know, Ms. Olson, that I had ruled during the last hearing that respondent could subpoena the person most knowledgeable about a subject matter, a specified subject matter. And so at least to that extent, I think Ms. Hassan's testimony is appropriate. And to that, at least to that narrow extent, I'm not going to grant your motion to quash. I certainly will consider the remainder of your motion to quash after we've proceeded with this testimony, but I do think it's appropriate for Ms. Hassan to testify about the matters that are stated in her declaration. So that's the way I'm going to proceed. So first of all, housekeeping matters. Ms. Hassan, please raise your right hand and put it over closer so we can see it. There we go, in the screen. "Do you swear or affirm, under penalty of perjury, that the testimony you will be giving during this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?"
I do.
All right, and I'll ask Ms. Mullin of my staff to display what I have labeled as Exhibit Respondent 13 in the screen share, and then we can all just make sure we're on the same page. So just bear with me, it'll just take her a minute to get that file uploaded. Okay, we haven't labeled this on the document itself, but in our files, we've labeled this as Exhibit Respondent 13. So Ms. Hassan, is the declaration that we have labeled as Exhibit Respondent 13, which is three pages long, your testimony for this hearing?
Yes.
All right, and with that, Mr. Manassian, since you subpoenaed first the most knowledgeable on the State Water Board produced, Ms. Hassan, I'm going to allow you to start with your questioning, if you have any, for Ms. Hassan. And again, the general scope is the matter is covered in her declaration, which we've labeled as Exhibit Respondent 13, and potentially related issues that are within the scope of the hearing issues. So with that, Mr. Manassian, do you want us to leave the exhibit up, or do you want to put it down at this point?
No, I would put the exhibit down, and if, for the record, I can just point out that I'm going to try to abide by the Hearing Officer's order, but that the subpoena deuces Tecum not being responded to and the previous quashing of our request for production basically means that I will have to examine Ms. Hassan without having had an opportunity to review the documents requested in the original request for production and the subpoena deuces Tecum. And of course, I'm reserving my objection that places the Grissette family members in an unlawful and awkward position, but I believe I can efficiently question Ms. Hassan.
All right, so with that, Ms. Mullin, you can go ahead and take down the exhibit, and we'll just go to the regular view of the parties, and of course, we can put it back up if we need to. All right, Mr. Manassian, your objections are noted. As I said in response to Ms. Olson's questions, I'm going to rule on the motion after we proceed with the test of the questioning of Ms. Hassan. But at this point, let's proceed that way, and then we will circle back to the issues regarding the subpoena and the motion to quash.
Ms. Hassan, you're not trained as an attorney, are you?
No, I'm not.
Did you receive any training prior to starting this process of trying to identify whose names and whose wells should be on Exhibit A to the order of the State Board and the letter of September 10?
Objection, big? What training? What kind of training?
Objection is overruled. I think the witness can testify to the best of her knowledge as to what training she's received that's relevant to a preparation of that. Ms. Hassan, if you're not familiar with the attachment A, we can put that on the screen, but you probably are. It's referenced in your declaration, and it's the, I think it's a four-page listing of various water right, what's called primary owners of different water right numbers. So please proceed to answer if you can.
So can you please just clarify the question? Do you mean, like, formal training, education, or?
No, I mean through a process of discussions, perhaps more than one discussion. Did you eventually in the month of September come to a understanding of what you were trying to do by including names and dates on Exhibit A?
What I was trying to do by pulling names and dates in Exhibit A. So we had the regulation that give us, the State Water Board, a mandate to curtail water rights holders to achieve certain stream flows in a certain gauge. So this is how I approached the whole process of creating the list. I wanted to create a list to curtail junior water rights holders to achieve certain flows in Wairika Gage. Does that answer the question?
It does. Just two follow-up questions. Did you gain this understanding over a period of time from conversations with people at the State Board, or did you gain it by a writing from somebody at the State Board telling you this is the way to do this?
I have been involved in the whole writing of the regulations and then implementing the regulations since the governor declared the drought in Siskiyou County. So I have been on numerous meetings of how we're gonna protect the fish and the streams and how we are gonna do that. So, yeah.
The regulation you're referring to is 875.5. That's one part of the regulation, is it not?
No, I'm referring to the whole emergency regulations in Siskiyou County.
Okay, and do you agree that your job was partly to interpret what 875.5 said in regard to Scott Smith Valley, excuse me, not Smith, in regard to the Shasta River Basin and Valley?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just make an objection, Mr. Lilly. I am, this is, we'll see where this goes, but this is not a hearing on our regulation, and so I'm hoping that we are not going to go down the road of , you know, reviewing the regulation. This, and this was my fear and why I filed the objection, is it's not appropriate to get a second bite of the apple here on a very simple failure to file a piece of paper like everyone else in Siskiyou County. Every other law-abiding citizen is working with the Water Board to comply with this regulation, yet here we are on a simple failure to file a piece of paper, or even pick up the phone and talk to the Water Board. I don't think it's appropriate to have this forum to go through the regulation interpretations thereof. So that's my objection.
She may have a standing objection to that speech. Chairman Lilly, I'd be happy to agree to that.
Well, yeah, I'm not gonna do a standing objection because I think those become confusing as to exactly what they contain and what they do not contain. But Ms. Olson, I'm going to overrule the objection. I understand what you're saying, and there certainly will be some limits to how far I allow Mr. Manassian to question in this area. But my view is, one of the hearing issues, assuming the board decides to impose administrative liability, is what is the appropriate amount of that civil liability? And the relevant statute is Water Code 1055.3, and it, to paraphrase, states that the Water Board in determining the appropriate amount of the administrative civil liability shall consider all relevant circumstances, including, and then lists four factors. So I think the question of how the Division of Water Rights developed the list that's in Attachment A in Exhibit Respondent 1, which is the order, the general order WR 2021-0082-DWR. I think at least some questioning of how this list was developed and how Mr. Stephen Grissette's name ended up on it is within the all-relevant circumstances. So that's why I'm allowing this questioning. But I do agree with you, this hearing is, it's for the purposes stated in the prosecution team's administrative civil liability complaint, and it's not a general challenge to the order that I just gave the citation for. That, Mr. Manassian, already filed a petition for reconsideration, which the Executive Director has denied. So I hope that gives some clarification, both for you, Ms. Olson, and for you, Mr. Manassian. And with that, you may proceed with your question.
Ms. Hassan.
Sorry, what was the question again?
Yeah, he's gonna restate the question. That'd be a long time to remember the question. So go ahead, please either repeat or restate the question, Mr. Hassan.
I'll restate. It will be slightly different, I'm sure. So is it correct that you took Regulation 875.5 and its language regarding the Shasta River and attempted to create a document that would interpret or enforce that regulation on specific wells and the operation of those wells?
So I'm not sure exactly, I can't recall the part of the regulations, but I would say I looked at the whole regulations. Yes, I'm not sure about if this is the accurate number of the section, but I looked at the regulations regarding Shasta, and yes, I worked to create the water rights that, or not the water, yes, the priority date that I think will allow us to get to the minimum in stream flows.
Okay, and do you agree that there are no priority dates adjacent to the names Stephen Grissette and George Grissette on Exhibit A?
And I'm gonna, just to help, Ms. Hassan, I'm gonna ask Ms. Mullin to display Exhibit Respondent 1 and scroll to page 7. This is the Exhibit A, Ms. Hassan, this is the Exhibit A Mr. Manassian is referring to, but I think it helps us all to be on the same page for that. So, okay. And I'm sure you're familiar with this. I think this this order and this attachment are referenced in your testimony, but I just think it's helpful to have this up there. And as Mr. Manassian just said, there are no priority dates by the entries for Stephen David Grissette. So with that, Mr. Manassian, now that we have this up, I mean, I I'm not gonna tell you how to ask your question, but I think your question really can be pretty simple. Why are there no priority dates listed in this table for Stephen Grissette? Is that really what you want to ask?
Yes, would you please try to answer that for us, Ms. Hassan?
Okay.
The most knowledgeable person?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So in the declaration that I provided yesterday, I put in details how we reach out to this list. So I'm gonna start with the groundwater appropriators. This is the list, the part of the list that does not, that they don't have priority date. So to get to the whole list, List A, we looked to the Wairika Gage, and we evaluated the shortfall. What's the difference between what's in this team right now with the gauge reads and what is required by CDFW minimum flows?
Ms. Hassan, could I interrupt you?
Sure.
My question is limited to the question of why aren't there priority dates adjacent to the Grissette names?
Okay, oh, wait a minute. So this is...
I'm glad to let her give the background, but I don't want the speech about the months of work, okay?
I want to, well, in the same vein of efficiency, I would like to object, this has been asked and answered in the declaration, specifically paragraphs. The paragraphs eight through 10, where it's described that some of these groundwater users have both overlying rights and appropriative water rights, and it's difficult to determine when the appropriative use started. It would not be appropriate to list the date that the well was drilled because these are dual groundwater rights.
Okay, Ms. Olson, that's...
And I think that's explained in the residue.
I appreciate that. Yeah, okay. The objection is overruled, Ms. Olson. Mr. Manassian is allowed to ask Ms. Hassan questions about her declaration and to explain that. But, and Ms. Hassan, please do try to just answer the specific question that I asked, and then Mr. Manassian asked. Why are there no priority dates by the Stephen David Grissette entries in this table?
Because how we I'll try to be very brief. So for groundwater users, we look to the, I need to explain why I have some dates for groundwater and why I don't have. So I need to explain why some groundwater users have some date.
Okay, please proceed and give us that explanation.
Okay, so to look to the groundwater use, because they are not in eras, we don't have our system, they are not required to report to the State Water Board. So I reached out to the Department of Water Resources. I asked them for the groundwater wells in Shasta. They gave me 5,000 wells for the whole Siskiyou County. We did some GIS analysis. We found the wells in Shasta, and we looked to the water suppliers, the ground, people who supply water and groundwater suppliers. We found those, and we looked to their priority date, and if their, or the date where the construction, the well was constructed was junior to our curtailment date, we got this aside. So we got, like, by that process, to look to the Department of Water Resources well data, we have the water suppliers. To get the water haulers or the appropriative, the rest of the appropriative users of groundwater, we reach out or the Assistant Deputy Director of the Water Quality Certification and the Public Trust, reach out to Taro Monoro, who is, I think the program manager of the cannabis cannabis enforcement section. Taro, I got an email from the Assistant Deputy Director, and in the email, I can see that Taro reached out, his staff, he asked them to do some query in our compliance system and provided us with some parcels that have wells that curtail water. We looked at these parcels, but there is no date on these parcels on when these wells were constructed. I was not provided by this data. When is the priority date for these water haulers? So, or these groundwater appropriators? So what I did, I just looked to the DWR, all wells, the 5,000 wells. I found that the oldest data point I have there is 1950. And at that time, at that time, my curtailment date was in 19, I think, 12. So I assumed, and that's like a safe assumption, I think it's a reasonable conclusion to say that, okay, these groundwater haulers probably have a priority date junior to 1950 and probably junior to 1912, my curtailment date. So I add them to the list. I don't, I don't know where these wells are constructed, but to my best judgment, it is junior to 1950 and junior to 1912.
Ms. Hassan, what was your intention in leaving the priority date blank in regard to the instructions to the Grissettes in September 10 order and letter in regard to how were they supposed to determine what they were supposed to do because of the curtailment notice?
I'm gonna object. The order speaks for itself and gives detailed instructions to the Grissettes on what they were to do, including reaching out and calling the Water Board. So I think that's an inappropriate question for Rajah.
The objection is overruled. Ms. Hassan, you may answer it if you have knowledge, and if you don't have knowledge, you may say you don't have knowledge.
Let me clarify the question. So the question is, the question, what is my intention of leaving the priority date out, or?
The question is, what was your understanding of what leaving the priority date out of the entries for Grissette was to leave them to do in responding to a curtailment notice?
Ah, the letter, the order that we sent to them tell them, if you got this order, please go to the State Water Board website, certify how much you use and when, and all these questions in the portal. If you have questions, please reach out. There is a phone number, and there is an email. So I would expect them to either go to the website and certify, or if they think their priority date is period to 1912, they can reach out to us. There is, we got back to everybody less than 24 hours to answer their questions.
Mr. Hearing Officer, could we put up the September 10, 2021 letter that Ms. Hassan is referring to?
Yes, just one moment. See if I can get the exhibit number.
I'm sorry, I don't have...
I think it's. PT three, uh, Ms. Mullen, please. Display exhibit PT three. All right, so, Mr. Manassian, we have displayed exhibit PT three, I, I recommend you start out by asking Mrs. Hassan if she's familiar with this. Letter, and then we can go from there, or you can follow up with questions if she is familiar with this letter. Uh-oh. I'm afraid, Mr. Manassian.
Formal letter that.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Manassian, you just froze for a minute, but. I think you're back now, so go ahead and ask your question.
Let, let me try, uh, i- is PT three a copy of the letter that went to everyone on the exhibit A list on or about September 10?
I, I think, Mr. Manassian, that Mr. Cervantes testified. That this is a copy of the version of the letter that went to Mr. Grissette, it has his name. At the top of the first page, so I think during our last hearing, Mr. Cervantes testified that this may have been. A form letter, but this was the one that went to Mr. Grissette, so please proceed with your question.
Yeah, un- unfortunately, because the state board is trying to collect. Penalties from George Grissette, I have to ask the questions generically as well.
Objection, George is not a, a party to this hearing, and we've gone over this before, relevance of. Bringing George in, it's irrelevant to bring George into any discussion here.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, Mr. Manassian, why don't you just ask your question, I, I'm gonna sustain that objection.
Let's go to page three of this letter.
Okay, we're on page three of exhibit PT three, go ahead with your question.
Now, Ms. Hassan, did you work with other members of the staff? To try to make exhibit three is clear and explicit about what you hope that persons on that list would do?
Yes.
Okay, let's go down to the language under the title groundwater wells.
And we'll scroll down to the last two paragraphs of page three of exhibit PT three, which are now on the screen. Go ahead with your question, Mr. Manassian.
Do you see the language? This curtailment order does not extend to overlying groundwater users. In the Shasta River watershed. Groundwater diversion curtailment extends only to appropriative.
I don't see where you're reading, Mr. Manassian, can you tell us what line you're reading, you might be on to the next page, I'm not sure.
My, my version of this has this on page three.
Okay, let's go scroll down, Ms. Mullen, scroll down to page four. All right, I think where you are reading, Mr. Manassian. And I don't know if you can see the screen, but on our screen, it's the sixth line down, so why don't you repeat your question? And if you're gonna read from there, which is fine, just read slowly so we can all follow.
Will do. Do you see the language? This curtailment order does not extend to overlying groundwater users in the Shasta River watershed?
Yes.
Did. You understand that therefore there was nothing for overlying groundwater users to do? In regard to responding to the list?
Objection, relevance, why are we talking about outliers when the Grissettes have already been? They've already been testified to that the Grissettes are appropriative users. And this was testified to by Robert and, uh, by Mr. Cervantes and, uh, Ms. Hassan.
I, I'm gonna sustain the objection, Mr. Manassian, I, I think you're gonna have to try to rephrase the question. In a way that doesn't assume. That, that, that Mr. Stephen Grissette was an overlying user for all of his uses, because that. That, that's a disputed question here, so by making an assumption about that, I think you're assuming. A facts that are not in evidence at this point, so I, I, I think you're gonna have to rephrase your question. To avoid that problem.
I'll attempt to do so. There's a reference to overlying groundwater users. Do you see that in the sentence that I just read, Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Did any of the communications? To the landowners on or about September 10? Define the basin or show where the location of the basin was?
Uh, can you scroll up just to the above page?
Okay, Ms. Mullen will scroll up.
Thank you. So I just want to show here. That in the regulation. It was, it is defined. What is appropriative groundwater users and what's overlying? And. Like the groundwater wells, the first paragraph, if you go to the end of the second paragraph. It defined that, and that goes to the, I think, the third. Point that is, sorry, scroll back to the top of the next page.
Yeah, well, it's right on the break here, go ahead.
First line it says, that's from the previous page, is the definition of groundwater appropriative users, and here in three, it sells. Sell or distribute water to someone else. So. For overlying groundwater. There is like huge amount of them, but to identify. Appropriate users, we have to do the exercise I explained earlier. Go to DWR, find the water suppliers, then reach out to enforcement. And fi- and try to find who sells water based on number three here. So. The letter we send clearly. Identify who is appropriative water users, and they are one of three, and I can see that three. Applies to the list without the priority dates, and this is why we send them those letters.
Okay, so. Did you finish, excuse me?
Yes.
Okay, so. The fact that you thought somebody was selling or distributing the water to someone else. Made the issue of whether or not the someone else was located on overlying land at the basin irrelevant, is that correct?
I'm gonna object, it's asking for a legal conclusion, it's not relevant to the purpose of. Putting this list together, and it's sort of outside the scope, and it's already been addressed in the order on reconsideration.
No, the, the objection is overruled, I. I, I think it's an appropriate question, it's, it's asking the witness to interpret text in this letter, which she. Has testified she was involved in preparing, so I, I. She clearly has some specialized knowledge, even if she's not a lawyer, about the content of this letter, so. Let's just, the objection is overruled, Mr. Manassian, why don't you just repeat or, or restate the question?
Mr. Lilly, may I, uh, quickly? Uh, have a follow up?
Oris, please.
Uh, Olson's objection is just. The, the, sorry, little bit out of it today, um. Mr. Manassian is trying to elicit a definition of what an overlying groundwater user is, and. His interpretation of what an overlying groundwater user is, is not what. The State Water Board, or really case law, supports to be an overlying groundwater user, he has said this multiple times. That he believes that someone pump, someone who owns land and pumps groundwater, but as long as they use it. Anywhere in the basin, they are thus an overlying user. Um, and we have, we have pushed back on that numerous times, um, so it, it really goes back to. What is Mr. Manassian trying to define an overlying user to be? When I think it's pretty clear in these regulations what an overlying groundwater user is.
All right, so I'm not sure if that was an objection, but if it was, it's overruled. Uh, and let me just clarify where I'm going on this, hopefully that'll help all the attorneys here. Um, and maybe, hopefully, Ms. Hassan as well, um. The, the question that Mr., the legal issue that Ms. Oris just described. Uh, as far as what. Pumping and usage is authorized by an overlying right in this situation, that's. A legal issue that I'm gonna ask the parties to address in their closing briefs, I mean, that's clearly something that. The lawyers should address and not, we shouldn't try to force Mrs. Hassan through that, I think that goes way beyond the scope of her. Testimony or probably even her expertise, uh, so. That we will do, and hopefully that will, um, let everybody know where I'm headed on this, I'm certainly gonna ask for. People to address that in their closing briefs in addition to the five hearing issues. What is appropriate for line of questioning here today is specific references to this letter, and I, I think. Mr. Manassian, what you're getting at is, and, and maybe I'm wrong, but we might be able to cut through this fairly efficiently. Is your question for Mrs. Hassan, really, if somebody thinks they have an overlying right? That authorizes all their pumping, what were they supposed to do in response to this letter? Is that what your question is?
That, that's exactly the question, and I'm trying to carefully. Without prejudice to Ms. Olson and Ms. Oris, leave for the briefing, the issue.
Okay, so, so let me just ask Mrs. Hassan that question. Mrs. Hassan. If, if somebody like, we'll just say, if Mr. Grissette thought. That all of his groundwater pumping and associated uses of the pumped groundwater was authorized by overlying rights. What was he supposed to do, and your, what is your understanding of what he was supposed to do to respond to this letter and the enclosed order?
So in the letter. But, and thank you for clarifying the, the question for me, but in the letter, we stated, if you think there is. Anything wrong, there is missing information or wrong information. Contact us, there is a phone number, and there is an email address. And. A lot of people reach out to us, some people read in the newspaper that there is a curtailment order in the Shasta. And they reach out to us saying, hey, I haven't got this letter, but I'm worried that. I am curtailed, or I got this letter, but I don't think I should be curtailed, and we responded to these people. So in the letter, there is. A way to communicate to us, to tell us there is something wrong in this. And we responded to every people, every person who reached out to us.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Hassan, so Mr. Manassian, I. I, I'm not, I think that is a pretty clear explanation of what her understanding is of. What people were supposed to do in response to this letter, so I, I think that covers this topic pretty well, do you have any follow up questions?
I, I do have a follow up question, uh, so looking at this language in number three. Sell or distribute the water to someone else, do you see a footnote six reference?
And if you want, we can scroll down and look at footnote six.
Yeah, that's what we.
At least, Ms. Mullen, I think it's at the bottom of this page. Okay, we now have footnote six displayed, go ahead with your question.
Do, do you see footnote six, Mrs. Hassan? And what did you understand the purpose of the language of footnote six was?
My understanding is that. What the footnote sure states, if you use. Water with your neighbor. It's not. Distributing. If you have any doubt. Please call us.
Okay, did, did you? Have the intention or any other staff member, to the best of your knowledge, before this letter and footnote was put together? That there be a requirement. Punishable by a fine. If someone didn't. Either fill out the internet site or call. The State Water Resource Control Board as referenced in footnote six.
I would. Expect there is consequences if you get an order from the State Water Board and you don't certify. And I am a technical person, I'm an engineer, but I definitely went through the whole letter, and I remember saying that. Your certification is binding not to. Follow the instruction in this order, it has also consequences.
So the word sharing, did, did you witness any discussions at the state board staff before this footnote was created? As to what the word sharing meant in terms of receiving money or. Cooperating and receiving goods from a neighbor because you allowed your well to be used for adjacent property?
You mean just talking about the word?
Yeah, I, I, I just need to know what you all thought was going to happen, somebody called and said, I'm sharing a well.
I, I, I don't recall specifically discussion about the word sharing. What I know in general, if you sell water in Shasta. You have to tell us, you have to stop right now, because the priority is probably. Junior to 1912, and you have to tell us how much. Water you use or you sell and all these things.
Let's, let's go back to what, at least on my version, is page three. And the discussion of the three conditions that make you an appropriator of groundwater.
Okay, we're at the bottom, the last three lines on page three, and, and it continues on to page four. So, um, go ahead with your question, Mr. Manassian.
I'll, I'll try to make this brief. Do you see condition one? You do not own rent or lease land overlying the basin that you use the water on. Did you have an understanding that if you. Own one piece of ground and you allow water to be piped or go in a ditch to another piece of ground that you didn't own? That that made it an appropriative groundwater use?
Objection, we literally just talked about how that is a. Definition of what an overlying user versus appropriator is, I thought we.
I'm trying to get at.
Wait, 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 Mr. Manassian, let Ms. Oris state her objection, please.
I, my objection is, this is again going back to the question of what an overlying. Versus appropriative water use is, and it's not, I mean, we can, you can write about it in your brief as Mr. Lilly. Asked us that we will be doing, but I, I don't think it's relevant right here.
All right, the objection is, oh, but. Go ahead, Ms. Olson.
I want to add an objection, it's calling for a legal conclusion, it's outside the scope of how. The division put the list together, and, um, so calls for a legal conclusion outside the scope.
All right, the objections are overruled because Mr. Manassian's question. Very clearly said, started with, what is your understanding? And that is, I mean, again, Ms. Hassan's understanding on a relatively complex legal issue. May or may not be correct, uh, but since she was involved, apparently was one of the primary authors of this letter. I think it's at least appropriate for Mr. Manassian to ask her what her understanding was of that, so with, with that, the. Objections are overruled. And again, Mr. Manassian, maybe, I think you were just asking about clause one, and I do appreciate your splitting your questions up. Clause by clause here, certainly will make it clearer, but why don't you restate your question? Why don't you restate your question regarding what Mr. Hassan's understanding was about clause one?
Mrs. San. I think my question was. What was the general understanding that you had? As to what a reader named on exhibit A. Was supposed to conclude. Was a situation where they owned overlying land? Or they didn't own overlying land that had a well on it, that water. Came from a well. On a different piece of property. What was the landowner supposed to do?
Okay, Mr. Manassian, try re-stating that. That's, that was just way too rambling and compound, so. Try to just ask her a short question with a specific hypothetical set of facts. About clause one. I, I think what you're saying is. If somebody pumped water from a well and provided it to. A neighboring parcel that overlay the same basin. Would that, would clause one apply or something to that effect? But please try to make a short, clear question here.
Yeah, that's correct.
So go ahead, ask your question.
Okay, Mrs. San. What was your understanding in regard to a landowner? Who had a well on his property? But allowed water to go in a pipe or ditch. To another property. Was to do at, or, or what class he was in pursuant to paragraph one.
Asked an objection, asked and answered. This has been asked today by, by Mr. Manassian, by Mr. Lily. And was discussed and asked of Mr. Cervantes last at the hearing on the nineteenth.
The objection is overruled. Go ahead and answer if you can, Mrs. San, about what your understanding is. Of what a landowner in that situation was supposed to do.
So let me clarify the question. You mean? A landlord, a landowner who has a land, has a well, pump water to another parcel that's. Not owned by them?
Correct. What, what are they supposed to do if they get this letter and they're in that situation?
They are supposed to assume that they are appropriative groundwater. They have any doubt. They should call the state water board to clarify.
And. And let's, let's examine the question of when they called the state water board. Did the state water board establish any procedures? For determining if their land that the well was on and the land that the water was being used on. Were overlying a basin?
I object, this hypothetical is particularly irritating, given that Grissette did not do that. So I, I don't know if. This whole issue of examining this question is hypothetical, speculative, and they could have called and found out. I mean.
The objection is overruled. Go ahead, you may answer the question.
I'll, I'll give you an example of what happened when people called us. People called us, they gave us a parcel number. We looked at the parcel. We asked them what's their water use, how much water they use. And normally we answer their question immediately. Maybe we go do some analysis and then get back to them. And tell them sometimes, hey, you don't need to do anything. Especially for like small domestic wells. Or, yeah, you think you need to certify. Or. Just fill the farm and let's know. So. We, 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 we answer people questions and we. To look to the parcels. I personally went to GIS. Find parcels, draw maps and send it back. Email the caller back to answer their question and to help them.
Do, do you consider filing a request for reconsideration with the state board? The same thing as asking the question of the staff as suggested in footnote six? In terms of being a response, the Gorsets were asking the state board. To respond and answer the questions.
I, I gotta object just because I don't even understand that question.
Okay, I, I think it.
All right, let's, let's, let, let me try. I'll sustain the objection. Mrs. San, do you consider? If somebody files a petition for reconsideration of this order, the order that was included. Enclosed with this letter, is that the same in your view as calling staff and asking questions? About the applicability of the order to that person?
Mr. Lily, may I object just on the grounds of this is not only asking for a legal conclusion, but as was. Established during the May nineteenth hearing, there are different. There's different processes, there's different divisions and groups that. The response is clearly an enforcement question, which was handled by Mr. Cervantes's shop. Not by the regulatory team that created this letter.
All right, the, the objection is overruled. I think this is a relevant circumstance. Involved here. So you may answer the question if you can, Mrs. San.
Uh, I was not involved in the. Reconsideration or petitions or anything. I was involved in. Red regulation, creating the list. And to some extent answering phone calls. But so I can't compare the two processes. I. My assumption, as that was very detailed and. Thorough process. But we did our best. To answer people questions and to give them the right directions, what they need to do next.
Mr. Manassian, I think, uh, Mrs. San has, has explained to the best of her knowledge. This topic, so I think it's.
You should. I, I agree. I, I don't want to consume the hearing officer's time unnecessarily, so. Let, let me just finish off. Ms. Hassan, did you witness any attempt? On the part of the staff of the state board to include some box or some entry on the internet form? That would allow someone who was an overlying land user, overlying well user. Who didn't believe they were an appropriative user to make an entry on the internet?
All right, and to help Mrs. San with that, I'm going to ask Miss Mullin to. Display exhibit PT eight. I think this will, I think, and you can ask your question about. A specific entry in the form, Mr. Manassian. I think that'll make it clear at all of us.
Thank you.
Okay, Miss Mullin, please scroll down. I think it's on the next page, so. Keep going. Keep going down a little farther, I think. Wait a second. Let me see if I can find. What I'm looking for here. I'll try to tell you what page. Okay, so it's at the, yeah, if you can scroll up a little bit. Yeah, it's, it's tricky because it's right here between two pages. Can you just scroll to the bottom of page one? There. Okay, so again, Mrs. San, we have a little problem here that we're, we're the page break between two pages, but. During the, the hearing day two weeks ago, uh, Mr. Cervantes testified about this. Curtailment form. And at the bottom of page one and the top of page two. There are, I think, four boxes where it says, select which of the following applies. And I'll help here. Number one says, I certify that diversion under the water right identified has ceased. Number two says, I am continuing to divert as provided. By section eight, seven, five point one, eight, seven, five point two, or eight, seven, five point three. Of the emergency regulation. I didn't read the parentheticals. And have submitted certifications. And then Miss Mullin, go to the next page, please. So box three is, I certify that continued use is under other rights, not subject to curtailment. And I have specifically identified those other rights, including the basis of right, party diversion in the box below. And then number four, I certify. That the only continued use for this right is in stream. Are, are you familiar with this form and particularly? This part where people can check any of these four boxes?
I'm vaguely familiar. So what I remember is.
Okay, go ahead. Excuse me. Tell me what you're.
When this form was created. I grew, I went through them very quickly. I did not create these forms. But I went through them very quickly to make sure that there is no big issues and. I, at that time, I thought. That covers everything. And. Yeah, and that's it.
Okay, so Mr. Manassian, you may, if you have a follow up question for Mrs. San about this form, please proceed. And we will scroll between pages one and two as. Ask us to.
Mrs. San, did you have an understanding? That at one moment. That someone was loading a truck with water to go fifty miles. That somebody would be an appropriative water right user? And the next moment, when they were irrigating their property adjacent to the well, they would be an overlying user? Was that your understanding?
Is the question that. I just want to clarify the question. Somebody who is hauling water. Several miles. Might think that they are the same as somebody who is just irrigating their water, their garden?
It, it's, it's reference to an appropriative groundwater right. Were there two types of rights at that well? One right that applied when water was being sold and put in a truck. And another type of right that was for irrigation of the land adjacent to the. Well called an overlying groundwater right?
I never thought of that, but. Now you say. Yes, you can exercise the same well different ways.
Do, do you agree that the language in the September ten, twenty twenty one letter that includes these three subparts? That we went over a few moments ago. Refers to the groundwater appropriator having a priority date from when the groundwater well was constructed. And water first used for non-overlying use. Was that, that phrase is used in the letter September ten? What did you understand that letter meant in terms of switching from one water right to another in an instant?
Mr. Lily, I'm just gonna, I've got to do a general objection here. I feel like. We are far afield from testifying about the creation of attachment A. To the order and I'm, I'm, we're coming up on over an hour now.
I'm almost done.
I just want to reiterate that we have gone far afield today.
All right, the, the objection is overruled. These, these, these are specific questions. About exhibit PT three and the witnesses' understanding of. That and how it applied to Mr. Grissette. Uh, I think that's certainly relevant to our hearing issues. And this was something that Mr. Cervantes did not have. Specific knowledge about, so that's why we asked, or I gave Mr. Manassian the opportunity to subpoena. A person most knowledgeable. So I. I think it is appropriate for him to ask Mrs. San this question. So go ahead, just repeat the question.
I will try to repeat it, Ms. Hassan. The September ten letter refers to the priority date. As applying forever based on when the well was constructed. Is it your testimony that you don't ever remember you and your cohorts talking about? Whether there would really be a one water right at one instant when water was being sold or put in a truck? And another water right at the same well, the next instant when the water was being used for irrigation of land?
So. We ask people. Even people who have. Groundwater wells, but they irrigate. In, in other watersheds, not in Shasta, in Siskiyou County, which has got like the same. Regulations or slightly different regulations, like if you have a well and you use to irrigate crops. Stop, just use the well just for. Domestic use. This did not happen in Shasta, but I, I would assume it is the same concept. If you have a well and you are overhauling this water. Outside of your parcel. You need to stop doing that. And come and certify to us and use the well just for your. Like riparian use or overlying use. So that was my understanding.
Do. We're, we're trying to, they're, you're trying to get money out of the Gorsets because they didn't file a piece of paper.
I'm gonna just object, uh, this meeting is not trying to do anything right now, except to respond to.
I withdraw the question, but let me get through this. Ms. Hassan. Do, do you agree that? The emergency regulation that gave the state board the power to do things. Governs what citizens have to do in terms of responding to your notices.
I object that this question is outside the scope of the limited testimony that. We are providing pursuant to the subpoena and it calls for speculation.
The objection is overruled. You, you may answer the question, Mrs. San.
Can you state the question again?
Uh, let me, let me withdraw the question, ask a different question. Do you see the word wen, W H E N? In regulation eight, seventy five point five, when it's referring to the Shasta. River basin? Do, do we happen to have?
Can we ask?
Yeah, that's gonna be a.
Examine a word, can we bring up the regulation on this?
Yeah, 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 we just admit, it's also, we'll do that. I, I don't know. If anybody. Included the regulations as an exhibit. I don't know, I don't.
Yeah, I, I don't either.
We did not because it was, um, I think, uh, your office officially noticed, uh.
Yeah, so I, so let's go. If, Mr. Manassian, if you want to ask a question about the regulation, we'll put the regulation on the screen, but it's not fair to the witness to ask.
No, let, let's, let me rephrase it. I'll withdraw and ask it a different way.
Okay, if you're going to ask her a question about ten pages of regulations, we have to let her read the regulation.
You, you've testified that you didn't think about it and you don't think your cohorts thought about. There being a water right one instant and then the next instant.
I'm gonna object to. Basically characterizing testimony in your question.
Okay, let me withdraw the question, ask it in a different way.
Yeah, try, 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 Mr. Manassian, to just ask a short question without the lead up talk. We don't need the lead up statements, just ask the question.
Ms. Hassan. You indicated that there was a priority date on some names. On exhibit A. And that priority date was the date that the well was built. Or constructed to the best of your knowledge. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And there were no priority dates on the Grissette names, were there?
Yes.
And so if the Grissettes were pumping water for agricultural purposes and using it on their overlying lands, there was nothing for them to do in terms of responding.
Wait, 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 Ms. Olsen, let him finish the question.
Well, I feel like he's testifying in the question.
Well, well, let him finish the question, then state your objection, please. And Mr. Manassian, as I said before, try to keep it in the form of questions. So go ahead, start over. You may ask your question, Ms. Olsen, you may then object, Ms. Ores may object, and then I will rule. But let's, let's proceed one at a time. We don't have a court reporter, but it's still best if we only talk one at a time. So Mr. Manassian, please ask your question.
Ms. Hassan, did the priority date change for a particular well based upon when the well was being used to sell water off of the overlying lands?
You mean? No.
Good. Now, Ms. Hassan, assume that somebody sold water for one day back in 1960. And then the well was utilized for agricultural purposes at all times thereafter. Did you have an understanding of what their priority date would be?
And I, Mr. Manassian, I'm gonna object to that question. It's, it's, because it's, it's very clear, she said there would be different priorities for the overlying use and for the trucking to basically off-site use. And, and so your question assumes one priority, which would be contrary to what she said and clearly contrary to the legal rules here. So I think you're gonna have to ask your question a different way if you want to.
I think I pointed out the character of this letter.
Okay, I think you're probably getting into things that you're gonna make, you're gonna, it's gonna be more efficient to make in your closing brief, but go ahead if you have specific questions for Ms. Hassan.
Ms. Hassan, you were also put forward as the most knowledgeable person in regard to three other areas.
All right, and, and, and Mr. Manassian, that's just not true. So let's, if, if we, if you want to get into the other areas, we're gonna have to talk about that. I think Ms. Olsen pretty clearly in her objections said that Ms. Hassan was just being offered as a witness person most knowledgeable in the area that I had identified in the last hearing, and she moved to quash the subpoena as to other areas. So it's not correct to say that Ms. Hassan was produced for those other areas. So who's in a section not part of the prosecution team. if you're done with.
I have nothing further than.
Okay, we will come, come back to the question of the motion to quash, but I, I don't think that's appropriate. So it's been an hour, over an hour now. Let's take a 15 minute break. And then I'm gonna ask, I will allow Ms. Ores to ask follow up questions. And I may ask follow up questions. I, I don't think, Ms. Olsen, you have a right to ask questions since you're not representing a party to this proceeding, but if you think there are questions that you think it's appropriate for you to ask, you can let me know. But anyway, we'll be on break. Don't log off, but you can turn off your camera and your microphone. We'll be back at 10:30. Thank you.
We still can't get anything.
I called inland and this isn't just affecting us. They were getting just call. There's some issue.
Mr. Manassian, you are not muted.
All right. So Ms. Olson, as I said before the break, I'm not sure you're representing Mrs. Hassan, who's in a section not part of the prosecution team, so which is clearly not a party to the case. But do you have any questions you want to ask Mrs. Hassan?
I don't. Thank you.
Well, we'll take that takes care of that issue. We won't have to get to it. All right. So Mrs. Hassan, I do have a couple of follow up questions. And I'll ask Ms. Mallon, please display exhibit respondent thirteen. All right. And in paragraph one, if you can make it one notch bigger. One click bigger. Whoops, that's too big. Down one click. Thank whoops. And back up to page one. Sorry, I shouldn't have been so picky here. All right, we'll leave it right there. So Mrs. Hassan, I think there's some years that are not correct in the last two sentences of this paragraph. And I'd like you to review them and just let us know if they need corrections. The about 10 lines down from the beginning of paragraph one. The second to last sentence states, "This task required a significant amount of my time from the middle of June 2020 until the issuance of the order on September 1, 2022." The order was actually issued in 2021. So should this be from the middle of June 2021 until the issuance of the order on September 1, 2021?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The last sentence also in number one, that's September 10, 2021.
Okay, that was my next question. So that also should be 2021?
Yes. All this work was done in 2021.
All right, thank you. And then if Ms. Mallon, if you can please scroll down to paragraph three. The second to last sentence in this paragraph states, "I determined that it was necessary to curtail all water rights with a priority date on or later than November 25, 1912." Do you see that?
Yes.
If I would appreciate it, please explain how you made that determination and particular how you got to that priority date.
Okay. So when the regulation was approved, then we started to find to figure out who do we need to curtail to get to the minimum in stream flows. And this is detailed in the declaration, but I'll go through it very briefly. And you can stop me if you have any questions. So we started by looking to the priority date of how we can just tell the junior, the most junior water rights holder to get to those mainstream flows. Started to look to the most junior, and these are the appropriative diversion diverters. We looked to the EROMs. This is the Water Right Database System. And we figure out who has permit a license issued after the adjudication. These are the most junior. Then we look to the appropriative groundwater holders that are junior to adjudication. Then we look to the adjudicated water rights. We identified all these. And then the riparian diversion. We put these all these in their order. Then we communicated with the water master to look to the availability of water to get to the shortfall between the gauge and what CDFW recommendation is requiring. We found out the shortfall, and then we looked to the water right in their priority order. And we also talked to the water master. Are these streams have water? How much water in the stream? So looking to the water availability and also the priority date and figuring out who are these water right holder. Then we decided or actually just looking to the availability of water and the shortfall. We found that where we need to curtail. And I just want to iterate that we didn't look to just the paper water right. It was very important to figure out how much water in the street because we knew some people, if we could tell them, we're not going to get any water. We're not going to be able to shorten the short or like fill the shortfall between the requirement and the flow, existing flow in the gate. So we specified that amount of order, the deficit, and then we looked to the priority and the availability of water. And we came up with that date.
Okay. And was this for any particular season? Or was it for year round?
We look to the adjudication like some every day, the first day I, the first thing I do is look to the gauge and see if we are in compliance with CDFW. So for those for September 10, we were looking to the average of the last five days and decided the shortfall and then decide who we are going to curtail. Then in 10 days, we we look to the gauge every day. And this is why later in the process, we remove some people from or suspend their curtailment.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that explanation. The last sentence of this paragraph three states, "The most senior curtailed water right in attachment A is a large diversion of approximately 40 CFS." Who is the water right holder or the owner listed for that?
That was Shasta Water Users Association.
I'll just, I'm just going to check.
In different order, but they are the Shasta River Water Users Association.
I'm just going to see if I just see them here in attachment A.
Maybe there it will be like an appropriation appropriation of their name. But I'm, I'm very sure that that was the last, the most senior.
Oh, here we are. I see. It's the very last entry in attachment four. It says Shasta RWA. And that's the 1912 priority date. So is that the 40 CFS?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Mallon, please scroll down to paragraph five. The last sentence here says, I looked at the, oh, for surface water appropriations initiated after the Shasta adjudication, I looked at the priority of issuance date specified in the permit or license issued by the state water board. What do you mean by priority of issuance date?
Because these are the most junior and they are appropriative water right holder. So they have in EROMs database, there is a field that specify their priority. And this is the issuance date of this permit or license.
Okay. And let me just check. Oh, if you can. Oh, I know. I did have another question. So I assume when you were reviewing the DWR well log reports, you found many wells that were for overlying uses. Is that correct? Basically farms where they would have a well on the farm and pump water for use on the farm? Did you find wells in that category?
It's, it doesn't, this is the thing with the DWR data. It doesn't tell you what these people are doing if they are overhauling or but. So these are just well records. And this is why I use that layer to get the big water suppliers, that people that I know are appropriating water. I searched in the database for water supply wells.
All right. So just hypothetically, if there's a farmer, not the Grissette's, but just some farmer somewhere overlying groundwater aquifer in the Shasta Basin. And they have a well that that shows up in the DWR database. And they're pumping water and using it solely to irrigate lands on their own parcel. Well, number one, do they get an SG number in the in the Division of Water Rights system?
Not in the Shasta.
Okay. Yeah, we don't need to go into other watershed. So and so how do you, how would you determine then if somebody has a well in that category and not to give them an SG number?
We assume that everybody is using their water in as appropriated unless we find otherwise. So for the water supplies, if I go to the database, I can see that this is water supply. So if it is the city of wheat or Guairica City and the well is flagged as water supply, then I know these are appropriative groundwater. But for people who hold the water or sell the water, we reach out or the deputy, the assistant deputy director reach out enforcement to query the complaint that we get for in Cal EPA and try to figure out who holds water.
All right. I understand those two categories of users, but I'm asking about the third, the farmer who just has a well on his property and just pumps it and irrigates fields on his property. If if a farmer like that has a well that shows up in the DWR database, what process do you use or did you use to decide not to give that well an SG number?
Because at that time, they were not curtailed. So I didn't, we didn't go that route. In other watersheds, if you might allow, I can just.
Go ahead, go ahead.
In the SCOT, we send it to every parcel because we could tell everybody, even overlying groundwater users. So we send a letter to every parcel in the SCOT. But in Shasta, we didn't have to go that deep into the curtailment to issue to to figure out who is overlying users and issue them an SG number and curtail them. And when I fin, when I got to that, okay, I need to curtail till 1912. I started to work on the letters, but when the what the letters was released, I started to work on the other, the rest of the water rights. So I started to figure out the rest of the adjudication because the adjudication goes to 1950 by 1885. So my next step was to figure out who is the rest of the adjudication, the junior, the most senior. And then the next step would have been figuring out who is the appropriative groundwater users. But luckily, we didn't have to curtail more than that. So I finished the adjudication water rights, but I didn't go into who are the appropriative groundwater users.
You didn't go into who were the overlying groundwater?
Yes, yes. Sorry. Yeah, the riparian on the overlying.
Okay. So you basically just did not include them in your database.
No, no, because we did not curtail that deep. But to get ready, because I was like, if it got worse next year, I need to at least figure out the adjudicated water right. And I figured those out. We have a database. We have their use. We have their names. It's, it's very hard to find the current owners. I spent like hundreds of hours trying to get to at least the most senior in the adjudication. And the next step would be if we have to curtail overlying users in groundwater users in Shasta, that would have been the next step. Luckily, we didn't go that deep.
Okay. So again, just so I'm clear, so you never gave SG numbers to the well, the wells or the well owners that you, based on your determination concluded were overlying users?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then I do have one last question. If you, Ms. Mallon, if you can scroll down to the end of this exhibit to the signature block. I'm just, I just want to know, it looks like you've signed this as Rajah Mustafa, and yet it says Rajah Hassan. And I just wonder if you could clarify that, please?
So my official name, not the name that I use in my emails and my work, is a very long name, Rajah Mustafa Hassan. But professionally, in my resume and in my state water board database, I'm known as Rajah Hassan. And I just, like, since the beginning, I sign this way. So this is my official signature in my driver license and everything. And this is the name, my, my professional name I use as a professional engineer.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that clarification. And I don't have any other questions. Based on on my questions, just I'll first go to Mr. Manassian. Do you have any follow up questions? And again, at this point, limited just to the questions I asked and the questions, the question Ms. Ors asked. We have to go off mute though, so we can hear you. Still can't hear it. There you go.
One, just brief, hopefully brief line of questions. Ms. Hassan, did you attempt to approximate the travel time between the Grissette wells that are listed on exhibit A and the time that water would arrive if a curtailment of pumping at the Grissette wells occurred in, arrive in the Shasta River?
I'm going to object. It's outside of the scope of the questions that the hearing officer just asked and explained for further questioning within that scope. And it's also outside of the scope of the the reason we provided this witness.
The objection is overruled. You may answer the question. And by travel time, I assume, Mr. Manassian, you mean the time for the water to travel underground from the location of the well to the Shasta River. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And Mrs. Hassan, if you, if you, I think it's a yes or no question. Did you determine that? We'll call it travel time.
Not specifically. We look to the gauge. We know who are the big diverters. And there are two gauges. We look to both gauges, but not specifically to that well. But they are, based on our assumptions, they are junior, way junior to 1912. And there is so many water rights holder we could put, we could have lift their curtailment before we get to 1950, which is like they will be the earliest based on our assumptions.
Correct question. Did you obtain information about the volume of water that was being used by the Grissettes on their farming land?
Objection, relevance. Now, the scope of the hearing officer's previous questions.
Overruled. You may go ahead and answer if you can.
We didn't need to.
All right. There's the answer, Mr. Manassian.
Nothing further. I'd like, I'd like to deal with an administrative problem. We, we've been trying to email to you and Ms. Ors some communications we received in regard to George Grissette on Monday and a response letter that we sent to put them in the record. And our, we're unable to email out any document because of a communication problem with all the equipment in our office. I'd like to have a fax number that I can send those, those documents to. And then there would be just two follow up questions to Steve Grissette.
Okay. So first of all, let's finish with Mrs. Hassan. And then we'll, we can address those other questions. So just I want to make sure I've closed the loop. Ms. Ors, do you have any follow up questions based on Mr. Manassian's questions or my questions?
No, I do not. Thank you.
All right. So Mr. Manassian, do you want to offer exhibit respondent 13 into evidence?
No.
Okay, I want to offer Exhibit thirteen into evidence, so, because I think it's an important part of the hearing record, so. I'm going to offer it into evidence as a, that's a. Basically, as a hearing officer's exhibit, um. I think we'll still leave it labeled as Respondent thirteen, but I certainly understand. Uh, and the record.
I have no objection to that process.
Excuse me, let me finish what I'm saying, and then you can state your objection. So, um, but the record is clear, this is not being offered as a respondent exhibit, so, Mr. Manass, I was going to ask if there are any objections, Mr. Manassian, do you have an objection?
No.
Okay. And Ms. Ores, do you have an objection?
I have a question as to, um, the communication document that Mr. Manassian is is referring to, I just wanted to make sure that I am. Um, we did receive. Um, a letter that Mr. Manassian sent to Mr. Cervantes regarding. Um, George's ACLO, um.
Wait, wait, wait. I I really want to finish up with Mrs. San first.
Okay, sorry.
Does anybody else have anything further with Mrs. San? All right, so. Exhibit Respondent thirteen is received into evidence. Um, Mrs. San, I. If you don't mind, you and Ms. Olson, just don't log off yet, I think we're done with your questioning, but just in case something comes up, I want to make sure we can. Get back to you. Um, so with that, um, that will take care of Mrs. San's testimony. Now. Let's start with. Yeah, and if if if, yeah, you can go off, off camera, but just don't leave, so thank you both. All right, so let's start. Um. I've I've gotten a little bit of a disrupted train of thought here, I'm going to let Ms. Ores speak first here, go ahead, and then we'll circle back to Mr. Manassian.
Yes, thank you, sorry, sorry for breaking up your train of thought, Mr. Lily, I, um, that was a. I merely wanted to clarify to see if we have already received the document. That Mr. Manassian is referring to, we received a document. Um, Mr. Cervantes received a document from Mr. Manassian about George's ACLO, I wanted to see if that was the document. That he's referring to, or if there's something different.
Okay, do you have a date? Is it a letter, if you can describe what it is, that would help.
Yes, let me pull it up right now, um, here, I think this is. No, this is not it.
They are just notifying. Me while Ms. Horace is finding that, that our system is back up. So I can send the documents I would request be identified as respondents exhibits. And Ms. Ores, it is the letter to Mr. Cervantes and also the notice from the state board that they want. They have levied a four thousand dollar fine against George Grissette.
And that's, we've already discussed that it's irrelevant to bring.
All right, wait, 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 wait. I've got to get the documents before we start talking about objections, give me a minute here, so. Uh, Mr. Manassian, can you ask your staff to email those, that's probably the easiest thing.
I can, right now.
Just to admin hearing office.
Wait a minute.
Waterboards.ca.gov. Thanks.
And this?
Yeah. Actually, not the enclosure, but it's got the addresses for Judge Lily and Ores on it.
Okay, I was going to email it to you, because I can't email from that machine, I can scan it to you. Do you want me to scan it to me?
Yeah, scan it to me and I'll send it on.
All right, well, Ms. Ores, if you have it, can you just email it to to my office, please, and just CC Mr. Manassian when you do that?
Yes, will do, I'm just trying to locate, I. Locate the document as well. Okay, here it is, I will forward this to your office right now, Mr. Lily.
Thank you.
Would you like me to CC the rest of the, um?
Just CC Mr. Manassian, and then we will. I just want to make sure he knows what you sent me, and then we will make a PDF of your email and add it to the hearing, to the administrative record. But make, maybe I'll make it go a little faster here.
I just forwarded it to you.
Okay. For some reason, it takes, did you send it to the admin hearing office email address?
I did.
Okay.
Would you like me to send it to a different email?
No, no, that, no, that's fine, I just. Some reason that email box takes a minute for things to come through to it, so. It's coming, at least I assume it's coming.
Did you include the handwritten note from Steve Grissette dated January? Twenty-two?
I don't. I don't know, uh, what you're talking about, sorry.
That's okay. All right, I just received a letter dated June one. Twenty twenty-two. From Mr. Manassian to Mr. Cervantes. Which has a subject line in the matter of the administrative civil liability complaint against George S. Grissette. And. There's no handwritten note included in it, just a three page. Type written letter, the third page just has the CCs.
Yeah, there, there is an exhibit.
Okay, well. Can somebody email that to me while you're doing that?
Yeah, um, yeah, I have, I have yet to see this document, um, as well.
So, Mr. Manassian, I guess your office is going to have to send us the handwritten note.
I do too.
Miss, Mr. Lily, though, may I? Raise an objection at this point, because these are in relation to George, not Stephen Grissette, and this hearing is about Stephen Grissette. And in the. Uh. Response to our motion to quash what written by Ms. Nice. Uh, prior to your, um. Uh, prior to you re, taking over this, this hearing, it did specify that George is not a party to this hearing, and thus. Discussions of George are irrelevant.
Oh, I'd really like to see the documents before I consider that, as I said before, I, you may have a valid point, but I want to see the documents, so let me.
Yes, the one that I sent you is about George.
Yeah, I just. I just saved that in the hearing documents folder. Where you can now all get it. And I'm going to look at that while we're waiting for the handwritten note that Mr. Manassian referred to.
Thank you for your patience. I I could save the the administrative hearing officer some time by calling Steve Grissette and simply asking him if he sent this handwritten note. On or about.
I want to see the note before we do anything else, please.
And I've just checked with, uh, my team, Mr. Cervantes, nor, uh, anyone on his team has seen any sort of handwritten notes, so I don't know if. If it was physically mailed, if it got lost in the mail.
Yeah, well, let's just, let's just get it. So, Mr. Manassian, is your office going to email that to admin hearing office? At. Waterboards.ca.gov with a CC to Ms. Ores, please?
That's correct, that's exactly what we're doing.
Tell me when you sent it, and then we'll see when we get it. Do you think this is going to be soon, Mr. Sir, uh, Mr. Manassian, should we?
I think it's going to be five or 10 minutes, do you want a break and come back?
Yeah, let's, that'll be a little more efficient, so if everybody can, please, don't, don't anybody log off, including Mrs. San and Ms. Olson, if you can bear with us, I don't think I'm going to call on you again, but I. Like to be able to if I need to, so let's. Go off, we'll go on mute and off camera, but don't log off, and we'll come back at eleven fifteen, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and get back on the record here. All right, so I have received from Mr. Manassian's office, a letter dated May 20, 2022, from Robert Cervantes to George Grissette, which includes an administrative civil liability order, the first pages, the first two pages are reversed from what they should be, but we can probably fix that, and a administrative civil liability complaint. And then I've also received from Mr. Manassian's office, a seven-page letter from Mr. Manassian to Mr. Cervantes dated June 1, which has three pages of letters and then a blank, a couple of blank pages, and then enclosed with it is a handwritten note from Steve Grissette to Mr. Cervantes dated January 24, 2022. And I've saved both of these in the folder, the general folder called Grissette Farms, not the hearing documents folder, so that you can, you should be able to both access those from the HOFTP folder on the State Water Board's FTP site. So, first of all, Ms. Ores, do you have both of those letters now?
Yes, I just want to make a correction. The first is an administrative civil liability order, not complaint. So this was, this was a while after Mr. George Grissette received his ACLC, so, and didn't respond, so an order was issued. So that's what the first document is.
Okay, I'm sorry, the order then has a complaint attached to the order. So that's what I was looking at. Starting on PDF page 7 is the complaint, but that was probably, I haven't read it yet, but that was probably referenced in the order. So, okay, so, Mr. Manassian, now that we have both of those documents before us, is there something you would like to say about them? But go off mute so we can hear you.
I would propose to ask a couple of questions to Steve Grissette and to recall him for that purpose.
Would the questions be about these letters or about the handwritten note or what?
About these letters and the handwritten note, and confirmation from Mr. Grissette as to how the wells are utilized or not utilized.
Okay, and Ms. Ores, do you have a response to that?
Yes, again, this is, these, both of these documents solely relate to George Grissette. They had, George has, has separate water ID's than Stephen. This hearing is in relation to Stephen's ACLC, and thus his water rights. It is not about George. George had the opportunity to request a hearing, he failed to do so. And as I said before, in the previous ruling that Ms. Nice issued, that she stated that George was not a party to this hearing.
Okay, and so, Mr. Manassian, it's, it's George Grissette, not Stephen Grissette, and it's two different water ID numbers than the water ID numbers involved in this hearing, so it seems to me that these letters are not relevant to this hearing, which very clearly is limited just to Stephen Grissette and the two water ID, water ID numbers associated with him. So what is your response to that?
My response, Your Honor, is that in every document filed, the petition for reconsideration, the briefs filed in this proceeding, the answers to the motions to quash, the documents have all been entitled Stephen Grissette, George Grissette, the revocable trust of George Grissette, and Grissette Farms. So, the proceeding has always been a consolidated proceeding in regard to all of the wells, which are operated and joined, operated or not operated, in a common system. And I believe that equity would require that there not be a separate fine based upon a claim of non-response, when clearly there was response on the part of the, all of those entities from the beginning. And in addition, the January 24 communication from Steve Grissette on behalf of his father, which we would offer into evidence.
All right, um, so I am going to deny your request, Mr. Manassian, to have Mr. Grissette testify about any of these documents. And I don't know if you were going to offer them as hearing exhibits, but if so, I'm going to deny that request. They're in the general administrative record, since we're talking about them, I want the record to have copies of them in there, so that we all know, the record is clear, what the documents we're talking about. So, we've put them in there, I think one of the letters, the one that Ms. Ores' office sent is in the hearing documents folder. I'm going to move it over to the general documents folder. I can't do that right now, I think one of my colleagues may have it open, so it's not letting me move that. But, we're going to put them there. You can refer to them if you think appro, well, I'll say you can refer to them in your closing brief, although I don't think they're going to be relevant to the hearing issues. There was some confusion with the prosecution team's references to Stephen Grissette and Grissette Farms, although they've always been very, very clear as to what water ID numbers they are talking about in this proceeding, in the administrative civil liability complaint, on which Stephen Grissette requested a hearing, and there's, there was never, just there's nothing in the record of any request for a hearing on the separate administrative civil liability complaint issued to George Grissette, so that's just not part of this hearing. So, so that's my ruling, I'm not going to allow any further testimony or argument regarding that. So, with that, I would like to circle back, we do have one other matter we have to resolve today, and that is, and Ms. Olson, if you're still listening, if you can go off mute and turn your camera on, I realize I do need to talk to you again. Um, we have, as I mentioned at the beginning of the proceeding today, I have received a copy of the subpoena in Deuces Tecum dated May 20 from Mr. Manassian to the State Water Board, and then I have the June 1, 2022 objection and motion to quash subpoena that Ms. Olson filed with my office. Um, so, I'll just say, Mr. Manassian, in light of the fact that I did allow Ms. Hassan to testify today, and I think she did give a fairly detailed explanation of the process that she and her colleagues used to prepare attachment one to the Division of Water Rights Order. Um, are you still contending that the additional topics in the person most knowledgeable, we'll start with the subpoena, that it's, are you still contending that I should require someone else from the Division of Water Rights to testify about the other topics that are listed in your subpoena?
Yes.
And, and what is your basis for that contention?
Title D requires the most knowledgeable person in regard to communications with the
I'm sorry, you broke up. What was the statutory side you just said?
It's not a statutory side, it's the subsection of the subpoena.
Oh, okay.
Relating to most knowledgeable person. Asked for the most knowledgeable person in regard to the communications between the county of Siskiyou, sheriff, district attorney, and county officials, and the state board. And so, we asked for both the documents and for the person who would be most knowledgeable to testify to that.
And what is your contention as to how that testimony or those documents would be relevant to this hearing?
It has become obvious, I think, that the wells were picked and the curtailment notice was given based upon information as to whether or not the well had ever, even for an instant, been made subject to loading trucks or supplying water to a neighbor in a time of trouble for their use. We need to know what the basis of this order was. It wasn't for the purposes of saving the fish in the Shasta River. It obviously was aimed at stopping or trying to stop neighbors helping each other in regard to water.
So how are communications, if there were any, and I don't know whether or not there were any, how are communications between State Water Board employees, and I'll just say, Siskiyou County officials are employees, relevant to that issue?
There was an injunction in effect from September 3 on preventing any actions that would interfere with water available. Now, it happens that the Grissettes have not pumped water to load trucks since approximately May of 2021, but the, the, the purpose of this enforcement proceeding is basically misrepresented in the regulations and the curtailment notices. And I think that's relevant for the hearing officer to determine whether or not any fines should be levied based upon that misrepresentation.
Right, I ruled during the hearing two weeks ago that evidence regarding the preliminary injunction issued by the United States District Court for the Eastern District of California is not relevant to this hearing, and that if there are any issues regarding violations or alleged violations of that injunction, of course, the District Court is more than capable of considering those issues and issuing appropriate remedies and orders, so that doesn't seem, that is not part of this proceeding. So, there, there's been no evidence whatsoever, here certainly nothing from Ms. Hassan, that there was any communication with any, between the State Water Board employees and any Siskiyou County Siskiyou County officials. I think she very clearly explained the process that she and her colleagues went through to determine how to, you know, basically which water rights to issue curtailments or orders for. So again, I'm I'm still not seeing any relevance to Part D of your subpoena, which is requesting people at the State Water Board to testify about communications with Siskiyou County. I'll give you one more chance, but can you explain to me how that would be relevant to this proceeding if there in fact were any such communications, which there's no evidence there were?
I don't know how the hearing officer would ever award sanctions or fines when the only evidence is that the purpose was not to curtail water use, but to prevent water from being extended from one well or a series of wells to other overlying lands that didn't have wells.
All right, I'm still not hearing any connection with Siskiyou County. Regarding the subpoena deuces Tecum part, Mr. Manassian, your, your email, the four categories of document requests are quite broad. Ms. Hassan has now testified and given some explanation. In light of her testimony, are there still any documents for which you contend I should enforce the subpoena deuces Tecum?
Yes.
And what are those documents?
They would be the communications with the county officials and their agents and employees. And there has been testimony that the information was provided to Mrs. Hassan by other members of the complaint division. And those documents may well show that the trail and the purpose of the can, the curtailment order was not as represented to protect the fish in the Shasta River.
All right. Ms. Olson, would you like, this was your motion. Is there anything you'd like to say in response to Mr. Manassian?
I'm just very troubled at the, I understand there's relevant factors to consider in a simple failure to file, but I'm very troubled about the broad scope and nature of the subpoena. I think there's a PRA that we will be complying with, and those documents will be forthcoming pursuant to the Public Records Act. I'm very concerned about the division's ability to implement drought emergency regulations in an efficient way if every hearing becomes a federal case, which it's not. This is a very simple, it seems, I'm not a party to this hearing, but it seems very simple. Many, many people in Siskiyou County have complied, have reached out to the division, are working cooperatively, and I'm just concerned about the process here and the amount of time it's taking our agency to move through where a simple phone call might have survived. So that's, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just giving my thoughts, and it's a hearing that I'm not even a party of, but I think you should grant the motion to quash and stay focused. Hopefully, our testimony today has been helpful to the hearing officer. But I am troubled if every failure to file becomes this drawn-out process. We're not going to be able to do our jobs correctly if that's the case.
All right, um, I don't, let me just see here, I've got too many papers in front of me. The applicable statute here is Government Code Section 11450.3. And I'll just read it. It's pretty short. Subdivision A states, again, 11450.30 of the Government Code, and section subdivision A states, "A person served with a subpoena or subpoena deuces Tecum may object to its terms by motion for protective order, including a motion to quash." And so I'm going to treat Ms. Olson's motion to quash filed yesterday as being under that statute. Subdivision B of that same statute states, "The objection shall be resolved by the presiding officer on terms and conditions that the presiding officer declares. The presiding officer make another order that is appropriate to protect the parties or witnesses from unreasonable or oppressive demands, including violations to the right to privacy." I'm not going to read subdivision C. I don't think it applies here. So under that authority as the presiding officer for this hearing, I am going to deny the motion to quash the subpoena to the extent that it applied to Ms. Hassan's testimony. I think her testimony was appropriate and was relevant. It certainly was very relevant, and it certainly was very informative for me and, and was very useful, and it was within the scope of what I had contemplated when I issued my ruling two weeks ago. In all other respects, I'm going to grant the motion to quash. I think the additional, basically additional person's most knowledgeable, to the extent Ms. Hassan has not covered the subpoena for persons most knowledgeable, and the request for documents concern matters that are probably irrelevant and at most only extremely marginally relevant to the hearing issues. I think Ms. Hassan gave very clear testimony as to the basis for the Division of Water Rights preparing the order and deciding who was on the list and who was not on the list. And there certainly was no hint in anything in her testimony that there was any discussion with anybody in Siskiyou County. Now, of course, Mr. Manassian may say, well, that's why we wanted to subpoena other people, but I think in this case, asking other people or requiring other people to testify and to produce the very voluminous documents requested in the subpoena deuces Tecum would be, or those in fact are unreasonable or oppressive demands within the scope of the statute. And therefore, based on subdivision B, I'm going to grant the motion to quash for all the other parts of the subpoena other than the part that Ms. Hassan has complied with by testifying today and by providing her declaration. So with that, the we have now received all of the evidence that I'm going to allow for this hearing, so the hearing record is closed. And incidentally, Ms. Olson, I mean, you can keep listening if you want to, but that your excuse now, that does cover your motion to quash, and thank you for staying on so we can talk about that today. So with that, the hearing record is closed. I'm going to ask for closing briefs for the attorneys, Mr. Manassian and Ms. Oris, to file closing briefs that will discuss how each of them and their clients contend the Water Board should rule on the five hearing issues stated in our hearing notice, and also the additional issues of whether or not any of the Grissettes pumping and use of water, pumping of the, Stephen Grissette's pumping of his wells and use of water was authorized by overlying rights. And if so, which uses were authorized by overlying rights? And then secondly, if there in fact were some uses that were authorized by overlying rights, how should that affect the board's decisions on the five hearing issues? And I will issue a written order, just spelling out this so you all have it. My plan is to have page limits of 10 pages each on the closing briefs and to have them due two weeks from today. Does anybody have any, and of course, when you file them, you just upload them the way you uploaded your exhibits, and then we will move them over to the AHO download folder and advise the parties so that after the date, so you can file it early and you don't have to worry about the other party seeing the closing brief before the deadline. We'll wait until after the deadline to post them. So with that, does anybody have any questions about the post-hearing process I have just described?
This is Paul Manassian.
Yes.
I think I understand your order. What I'm concerned about is Ms. Olson may take your ruling on the motion to quash as a basis for not responding to the public records request.
Okay, so, so let me just, I think I can take care of that very clearly. I sent an email to Mr. Jay when he sent us a copy of the Public Records Act request, advised, and of course, I CC'd everyone on the service list, so you both got that. And advised him that, that we were going to file the PRA in our administrative record, just the way we do with all documents we receive for this hearing, but we're not going to take any further action on that. So my position is nothing on my ruling on Ms. Olson's motion to quash the subpoena and the subpoena deuces Tecum has any effect whatsoever on your separate Public Records Act request. That is not before me. I have no authority to rule on that, and I'm not intending to rule on that. So I hope that clarifies that for you, Mr. Manassian.
It does. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, any other questions or comments you have at this point?
None.
All right, Ms. Oris, any other questions or comments from you?
Just clarifying, so your, the briefs will be due on the 16th, and is that close the business or would that be?
Our, our normal practice is to require them by 1:00 PM. The reason I do that is then my staff doesn't have to stay after 5:00 to post them, and we can get them posted the same day, so it'll probably be, I think it'll be 1:00 PM, but I will issue a very short post-hearing order that will have that. And then just so you all know, I suspect you both are quite familiar with the process, but the follow-up process is my office then prepares a proposed order which we transmit to the clerk of the board, and of course, when we transmit that to the clerk of the board, we will send copies of that to everyone on the service list. Our normal timeframe for doing that is within 90 days, which we try to meet. We do obviously get, just like all of you, we get busy with other matters, but we will do the best we can. So that is my process, my process going forward. So any further questions? All right, well, thank you both for your professional demeanors, both during the hearing two weeks ago and today. And I hope you, you and everybody else on this hearing has a good day. Goodbye.
Thank you.